Okay, this is the planning board on May 17th, starting at 6:00 PM. 6:30, I'm sorry. Members here, Donna Masucci, Joyce Cabiano, Andy Melianikas.
I'm here.
John Driscoll.
Here.
Bob Tess here. Ron Huckins and Barbara Irvine. And with us also is Connor McGyver. I'm Ron Allard, and stepping in soon will be Andy Knapp, who stepped out for one minute. First order of business, I guess we would. Before you remember, buddy? Full flex. First order of business is to review meeting minutes from the third. Any corrections or suggestions? I'll make a motion, we accept the meeting minutes from the third. Second?
Second.
Donna, we'll start you.
Succi, aye.
Capiello, aye.
Yeah, aye.
Driscoll, aye.
S.C.R., aye.
Allard, aye. I ran this down. I made a motion.
Andy was.
Andy, second. I'm not taking any notes. So next order of business, next order of business is to review the subdivision regulations.
It was just a couple of minor changes that was picked up on by legal. Because the other one, we can discuss completely.
I love that approach, because that'll get us out of here quicker. That said, I have reviewed them, I have a couple of minor questions. Anybody else have any questions they want to bring up? For 3.2.7, it's on page six, second one down.
Of subdivision.
Site plan, I'm sorry, site plan. Yeah, 3.2.7. It says the first sheet, I thought we talked about putting the notes and the legend on the second sheet, or come up with a fancy name for the second sheet and put it all on that. I thought this was a change. Did it?
He's right, there was something listed that's probably on the second page and not the title page, because the title page is definitely the first.
Yeah, so I thought we were going to go over the second page where the notes, the legend and all stuff's going to be on the second page. That's what we discussed. Yeah, I thought so too. This says the first page. So. We asked staff to do, was come up with a fancy name for the second page.
Yeah, so it says first sheet of the plan, so it wouldn't be a cover sheet.
So it's first sheet of the plans? Okay, so you're saying that's me, okay.
That's how I would interpret that, by looking at it, technically it's the second one, because it's the first sheet of the plan.
Why don't you clarify it anyways?
Let's clarify that.
All right.
Just add some language to make it clear.
Yeah, it wasn't clear to me.
Take that one and put it to the public hearing on seven.
Yeah. Yeah. For 2.5.1 parentheses 10. That's the one where we talked about, they could make a written request for continuance. That one we talked about, this is what we talked about. But I guess, what I was thinking about was, could we add language? Would everybody else be okay with language that says, if you submit a request in writing, it'll either be, the next meeting it'll be approved, or we'll ask you to come in for more information. So, I don't want to have people coming in just for continuance, it's a waste of time. But I don't want them to think that if they don't come in, it'll be rejected. And we have language in there which says, it won't be rejected, but it may not be accepted next meeting. We'll ask you to come in the following meeting.
Well, if it's not accepted, you basically continue the continuance. Because they're scheduled for that meeting. So if they say they're asking for a continuance, and you say, no, we want you to come in and talk to us, you really continue until the next time they come in and talk to you.
But that means, I'm afraid that will bring them in, because they were afraid to be, we won't, we won't, we'll deny the continuance and they'll have to present in that meeting. And what I'm trying to do is, I don't think, the whole time we've been in this world, we've never rejected a continuance. We've never rejected a continuance. And I think the intent here is to not make them people come in.
But this is basically saying they don't have to come in.
Yeah, but it doesn't, I guess my concern is, if I read this, I'm concerned if they're going to make a decision, I'm not there, what if they deny my continuous request? And I was supposed to present at that meeting. So now I have to come in, anyway.
But you want something to basically say, an extension would be approved by a written request, instead of.
I think what I'm saying, John, is, if you put a written request in, and we don't accept it, the action will be, we'll ask you to come in, and give us more information, because we're not accepting it. So you know you won't be rejected in that meeting, so you don't have to come in. Barbara?
Well, usually they give the reason why they're asking for continuance.
We're going through this. We're going through this. Site plan, site plan. So my concern, what I'm trying to do, Andy, is allow the applicant to ask for a continuance, and be comfortable not showing up to the meeting. Because we got people, we got residents that are paying, maybe engineers and stuff. And it's needlessly expensive, the paid engineer to come in, and sit in the meeting for continuance, that is 95% sure it's going to be accepted, but not 100% sure. So if we reject the continuance, and they got to present that meeting, the engineer's got to show up, right? So, I'm looking at, the next meeting we will either accept the continuance, or we'll ask you to come back in the following meeting, to provide more information, why we, you need to continue. So, they don't have to come in, 100% sure they don't have to come in.
This is not talking about time, you just.
I'm just talking about. Well, you're asking for a.
Asking for an extension.
Yeah.
So that would continue to the next meeting anyways. Or the, whatever, if they asked.
Yeah.
Meeting, then, why would you not continue to the front, that they got no new.
Yeah. Or the same thing with continuance, you know. I'm trying to make it, make the applicant not pay for an engineer to come in, on the off chance that will deny the extension, deny the continuance.
I see your point, but the way I read this, they make a form, writing they don't have to claim, how I read this. But we might deny it, aren't you?
Yeah, that's the problem, it might deny. And what if we.
What I'm saying, so, if you put in a written request would be accepted, maybe then it makes it clear. Because if you're going to the next meeting, you're accepting, I mean, if they're due at this meeting, and they get something in writing and they're not here, and you're saying, I'm going to deny that request, and they got to come back the next meeting, you've actually gave them the permission not to be in this meeting. Because you're asking them to come to the next one. Kind of granted it already, you know what I'm saying?
Well, if we don't grant an extension, or we don't grant a continuance, they should be presenting in that meeting. Same, the meeting that day is on the agenda for, right? So I guess my concern is, somebody going to read this and say, I got to come in, even if I put a written request in, you have to come in anyway on the off chance that a continuance or extension is not granted.
If I may, two options. One, that's something you can contemplate in rules or procedures, which is your policy for the operation of the board, and say, if you tend to deny a written request, then our procedure, our rules or procedures, would invite them to the next meeting, extend it for one meeting. Leave your regulations the same, so a future board could change the procedure. The second option, be to either through the rules or procedures or separately, advise staff to consult with applicants, and make it clear to them that the board's intention, that if they believe they have reason to deny an extension request or continue, that their practice is to invite you to the next meeting, not just flat out deny. So continue it for one meeting and bring it back. I don't necessarily think it needs to be in the regulations, rules or procedures, or let staff do it.
I kind of like the policy idea.
And then after you're done with all the regulations, you probably ought to spend some time on rules or procedures that haven't been updated in a while, with the zoning board, and so, maybe you got the first note on a list of things to think about. And you can make it clear, the narrative for the rules or procedures, the intention of this, is to save the applicant.
Yeah.
We care about what it costs to come before.
Yeah, I mean, having an engineer come in, and just sit here, a waste of money for the applicant, waste of time for the engineer.
So if you change, yeah, right, the way it's written, actually, it's pretty good, so you could leave it alone to move it forward.
Yeah, I think if we put in policy, I like that idea.
I mark.
The rest of the board will propose a procedure, and then we can have Vanessa, we'll pass the information on to Vanessa.
If, if needed. But that would be something interesting, part of the rules.
Okay, the. Actually, that one I figured out. This was probably a over an explanation. Subdivision regulations, page seven. 12.7, table two. It says, state roads and renumbered footnotes, I didn't quite understand that. 12.7, page seven, it's the second one down. And in the proposed, it says, intersections with state roads and renumbered footnotes. I didn't know what that meant.
Oh. If you look in the table, look at the table.
Yep.
So the table, there was a change in the footnote, was one.
Table two?
Yep.
Because that, the note, it was on table two.
Yeah.
Number two, from that table, says, grades not exceeding 2% for intersection with state roads when specified by NHDOT. So that goes along with what that proposal is, so it's written in on this, written in as this note right here, on table two. You added the note, the note wasn't there before.
Do we need that in the proposed language though?
Well, when you approve to amend this, what you're approving is adding that footnote to the table. So you would have to have it written down that you're adding that note, and then you're approving. You can't just add a note to something and not talk about it or discuss it and vote on it.
Didn't we, in the table, we didn't modify the table too, did we not modify the table?
Something about modifying the table.
We have a proposed table and a new table, right, so we've already discussed it in the table. Why does it need to be, I guess, I'm not clear why we need to have that phrase in the language right there. The table's been reviewed and approved, John, so the footnote's in there.
Right, okay, I see what you're saying.
So why does it, why couldn't we just say, state roads, period?
Yes, because, but what he's written in there is what is actually that note that's written. It's word for word, but the note is, because the note says, grade may exceed 2% for intersections on state roads when specified by NHDOT. Because we've had a few of state roads encading in what the town is.
Why don't we just say, why don't we just say that instead of referring to the notes?
Because they have a two cent grade on town road, they want to keep that on the town road. It's the state road that wanted something different, so the note says on the state road, they have that cut on the town road. Town wants to keep that pitch going back, so that their wings don't catch that edge when it comes when they're following the road. So that's the whole reason to keep it, the pitch being the same as the road, or being steeper than the road, so that it's not higher for a wing to catch it and rip the pavement off.
Yeah, but my point though, John, is the footnote says, state roads when specified by NHDOT. Why doesn't this phrase say, when specified by DOT? You know what I mean, rather than, why doesn't it just say the same thing as the footnote, rather than refer you to the footnote? It just seems to me, a weird way of doing it.
Because if the state information changes, then you don't have to go back and update.
Because it's specified by DOT, it's not going to change, it's DOT.
DOT changes their rules by different things.
Alls we're saying here is specified by DOT, so DOT can change, we don't change our reflections, because we say specified by DOT. So I don't know why we say renumbered footnote, rather than just say, as specified by DOT, like the chart says.
But it's a footnote that's added, that footnote wasn't there, so the only way they could, everybody was coming in in a way that had a different grade on state roads, because our regulation didn't give them.
I'm not arguing that, John, I'm just saying, table two has been modified to say that. I don't know why the phrase has to say, you know, reference to footnote, it's, the footnote's on the chart. So I'm just confused why, why that says, why instead of that, it says, are specified by DOT, and renumbered footnotes. I'm confused why that makes more sense.
So the proposed changes, we're adding that footnote, that's what the change is, it's not saying, that's what the change, there's a change.
Clarifying, changing.
Just the next one, it's saying. Yeah, it's saying that we added this as the footnote.
This is a regulation.
It's going to be, it's going to be changed, the language of this.
Footnote.
So just explaining.
I got it.
You know, if you were at the last meeting, you would be up to speed here.
I know, I follow you. Okay. Next one is right below, two below it, says, C attachment two, and there was a C attachment two. So I don't understand that one.
Which number?
Point eight, point three.
Three. Yeah, so I'm a little confused.
So go to the last page, I think that was one that's.
It's page seven.
And me too, right here, this chart, so they're changing the chart. So you got charts, you got the proposed rate, that's in the number two. So just states, that's one of the things you're voting on, is you're changing this chart.
All right, good news, I think I only have one noise.
We're here for you, Ron.
And Mr. Mead, what can I say? For, on page four, subdivision regulations. 12.3.1 parentheses four.
A common driveway?
Yeah. I don't know why we took, why don't we take out the frontage requirement, I guess, is. Why do we take out the frontage requirement, I don't remember the discussion.
This requirement stays the same, there's got to be at least 25 feet for each of the back lots going back, if it's done as a shared driveway. There's a possibility, that's in the regulations, that if you have two front lots, with two back lots in behind it, so it's almost like if you had two front and then two flat lots. They wanted them to use one curb cut, so instead of having shared driveway curb cut, a curb cut for a front lot, and a curb cut for another front lot, there was encouragement to have one driveway access to limit the number of curb cuts on the lot. So, the whole thing that changed is, it was made it clear that if the fourth house is on, well, the fourth lot's on there, because it was listed as home before the houses, that if you put the fourth house on there, you had to build it.
I understand that, John, but is this not getting rid of the other language after the, it changed from time specifications to specification for private road? Are we keeping the language after that, or losing the language after that? That's my question. So all the part that says, be considered minor reduction width, four lots are served by common driveway, then it says, you know, located in public mode, and two of the lots must be located on public road and meet the frontage requirements in the district. All lots must be accessed on the shared driveway, no curb cuts are permitted for frontage lots into an existing public roadway. Is that language staying or going away? That's my question.
The existing stuff to the left is all going away.
Okay, then.
Because they're basically saying that, once you hit four lots, you're building a private, it's no longer a shared driveway.
Right.
Or they're on shared driveway, so that's all.
I agree, but why are we, why are we taking out the frontage requirements, is my question.
The frontage requirements are taken out, this was talking about having a common driveway that services four lots. Your frontage requirements are all in zoning, it stays in zoning, it's going to be in zoning, those frontage requirements, you can't change any of our subdivision rules. This has to do with shared driveways, so they're basically saying, four, you could put four lots on a shared, they said four homes, they changed it to four lots. So they're saying you can't put four lots on a shared driveway, you cannot do it, it has to be built to a private road.
I agree with that.
You do three lots on a shared driveway.
But my question is, John, if you read the current and the proposed, it deletes a whole bunch of language, that's my question, why?
Yeah, so, so if you read the one above it, where it talks about the whole thing for the
Common driveways will be utilized, however, no more than four houses may share a common driveway. Three or more houses are served by a common driveway, that's the old language, we changed it, so it says, common driveway may be utilized, however, no more than three lots may share a common drive. If three lots are served by a common driveway, such driveway shall have a street name approved by the town to the maximum extent possible, and shared portion of the driveway shall follow the shared lot lines.
Right.
So, I'm guessing, I'm trying to, so if you have to build that to a town road.
Well, that's not my question, John, my question is, why is the frontage requirements, are they in or they out? And if they're out, why are they out?
Okay, they're taking them out, for the reason, it's no longer a driveway. Once you make it a road, that road is your frontage. That new road is your frontage, just like a subdivision road. So if you're building a road going back, because you're going to put four houses back there, that road is your frontage. You don't need frontage on the other road, because the new road, the frontage is the same as the subdivision road.
So driveway goes to a road.
Yeah, it's on a class six.
Got it, got it, got it, okay. Now, one more question. When I read that, I guess I'm concerned, I'm questioning whether that language, I don't understand that language as it applies to two, 12.2.1. Because this says, if you read the table, it says, private road can only have four dwellings maximum, at the dead end. But then on the road standards, it says, the minimum paid, it says it's 20 there. Paying for local roads is 20 feet, width might be reduced to 18 feet, at least for dead end roads. The average traffic below 100, doesn't have any truck traffic. So, does that allow you to service more than four lots?
You build a road, not going to change that. Basically, they're taking that away, that you can't put four lots on a shared driveway, that's what they're trying to take away. Now, if you have the fourth lot, you have to build a, that's what that whole thing was all about before.
Right, but does 12, does 12 make, confuse that? 12 says you can go down 18 feet, the dead end road, doesn't say anything about four. It just kind of says.
What, which part you want, I'm trying to find it.
12.2.1. Private road standards. I'm trying to, I'm trying to.
Are you in the subdivision, eggs?
Yeah, yep, I'm a subdivision.
Because 12.2.1 to me is.
I'm, 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 the old book. This new book does some numbers. It's called road design standards. So my question really is.
Page 56. Yeah, that's what I have.
Shoot my tab, yes, I'm sticking with the old book right now.
I was, I apologize, I was.
Yeah, road design standards.
You're going to shot.
Yeah, if you go to the chart, it says you need 20 feet, and you can only do four houses. And then, the road design standards, says you can go down to 18 feet. Yes, it's a dead end road with an average daily traffic below 100. Now, what if I have five houses, with average daily traffic below 100? Allow me to go to 18 feet for a private road, because of, because of that?
Once you go over the four, now you've got to build it as.
You have to build it as a.
We're trying to make this less confusing, let me propose, I'm somebody reading this, and I come in and say, yeah, I got five, my daily traffic is below 100, so I can go down 18 feet, can I?
That, that's, if they wanted to bring that argument in and ask you for a waiver, then this board would have a right to discuss it. If that's what it comes out to, but we say that they have to have a book, anything to that in order for you guys to grant the waiver, because that's your decision on granting the waiver, not mine.
Okay. It just, I guess, this limits you to four, and this language is less clear to me, that you're limited to four. So you can go down to 18 feet.
This is not a proposed change for now.
Yeah, I know.
Whether we address it later on or not.
Yeah, we should.
You could, maybe future, do we change the number of, and stuff, and as a board, you can discuss that and make that as a future change.
I just thought, it didn't, it didn't seem to sync up very well, and I was concerned about somebody could misread it.
But what they were trying to fix on the stuff that's here that's changed.
Yeah.
They wanted to make sure that you weren't putting four lots.
Yeah, and I'm good with that. I guess my question was, does this road standard phrase, make it ambiguous, make it less clear?
I think it says that it has to be built to a town road, so if you got four, private road access. But if you got more people, how you got to build it?
Well, it says the width can be go down 18 feet if you have an daily traffic below 100. I guess, can someone make the argument that I, I have five, but my daily, my daily traffic is below 100, so I should be able to go down 18 feet?
But you're serving more than four lots.
Right.
So, what's your justification to use that if you're serving more lots, I mean, anybody can make a.
Let's say it's, let's say it's four, let's say there's four houses. If you've got four houses, your daily traffic's below 100. So is, is the 20 even worthwhile? Every, every four lot road is going to have, actually, daily traffic less than 100. So every, that means everybody can go 18 feet, so. So what, what do we have, 20 feet, if everybody can go 18?
So is there a problem with having an 18 foot road, if you've got shoulders on it? I mean, that road, the thing that Rick was talking about for the private road, is only a 16 foot travel way to meet his bike over the limit.
Well, I guess.
Is there a problem, you've got a really low traffic count, so allowing to have it, it's really, it's a big deal.
My question, my point is, we say 20, and there's no way we can enforce 20, because everybody's going to have a daily, a traffic count of less than 100.
You can change it, make it 18 if you want.
Well, at what point does the truck traffic, is that one truck, an oil truck comes?
No.
Opane truck comes? If there's, it's a short road with four houses, you're not going to get through traffic, you know, truck traffic anyway, convoy.
I think this is another one, when you write regulations, you carry, you have something else before, and you're not looking at it specifically to what you're writing. No, that's, it can happen.
But as it's written, if they have one truck going, they're going to do the 20.
Everybody's going to have, well, unless they put in heat pumps, everybody's going to have either a gas or oil delivery.
Oh, they are.
Yeah.
I mean, even if you look at this, in the way it's written, and if you have any sort of slope to it, the 20 feet applies.
That's true.
But why?
When curbing is required on roads such as intersections or steep grades, then the pavement width shall be increased by two feet.
Is that two feet above 20, or is it two feet above 18?
It's two feet above the 20.
I agree.
Right, so instead of 18, now you got 22.
It's fixed, what's your regular road standards out?
So is there, is there any, so my point is, is there any circumstance it'll be 20? It's not steep, it's 18, it's steep, it's 22. So we say 20, and I see no circumstance where there ever be 20.
If it's, it's an argument, I mean, anybody can come in and make an argument.
Why'd he say 20?
We as a board have to make that decision if we're going to grant that waiver.
So you want to say it could be 18, if it's steep, it has to be 22, you got to be four foot?
As long, my point is, it's either, it's, it's never going to be 20. Right now, it's never going to be 20. Because if it hasn't got steep slopes, traffic count's going to be under 100, it's going to be 18. Your pessimism's brutal.
Your pessimism's brutal.
We're trying to, we're trying to clarify the rules and make, and make it easier on John. I'm why doing the ones that have a question?
No, I understand what you're doing, you're playing devil's advocate, you have to sometimes.
Does, does twenty, is, is, does twenty ever work?
No, do you just scrap the eighteen then? It's twenty feet.
I mean.
I, I mean.
I think there's just.
Pick one. Well, but we're saying if it's not flat, it's twenty-two, so.
But it, we also say that it has to be built to town road standard. And, and the.
Right.
Well, we say, I mean, town standards is fifty and this is thirty and this is twenty.
If you look at a minor access private, it's twenty feet.
Or, but if I have less than daily traffic of a hundred, then it's eighteen feet. Or if it's steep, I gotta do twenty-two feet. So I, it's either, it's either eighteen or twenty-two, it's never twenty. My point.
So I said, you scrap the eighteen and just leave it at twenty, which aligns with your town road standard.
If you want to strike, well.
Can I just make a suggestion? This is not on our list of stuff for tonight's changes. Maybe we should think about this for future changes.
Okay, I mean, it's, it's, doesn't make any sense, is my point.
It's like. A lot of time on this is something that we're not gonna address tonight.
True.
I am, I'm just pointing out that.
Still have work to do.
We still have work to do.
There you go.
It doesn't work.
It's never, it's never gonna stop. Anytime something changes, it affects something else.
Well, we're fixing this and then we, there's, there's another phrase right next to it that doesn't, we're not fixing and it's kind of in conflict, I think.
What is that?
I think the eighteen feet is in conflict with the twenty, obviously.
But that's not part of the proposed changes tonight.
That's true, but it, it highlights the fact that we have a disconnect.
Gonna be possible.
Yeah, all right, the good news is that's all I have.
Stuff, town attorney, are you gonna bring it up?
Yeah. Chair's meeting. Chair, chair's meeting.
Oh, just for the record, Andy Napp is back into the meeting. So for my little awareness, went through roll call, viewed in a minute, we didn't have any position items. So, went through site division, subdivision and site plan news. Would you like to carry on with the conversation on those?
It has to do with the culvert language. Everybody got. This, this article would not be approved tonight. Because if you set this as a change, it would be continued to the next meeting so that it can be approved. Just wanted to have a conversation on the proposed changes to make sure that it all goes through with DC intent for what this, what had discussed with DC. From the change to begin with, you really talking about that culvert size and the whole. Need what Jeff had written, it was like the last sentence after it said that you can read down to a twelve point culvert, it says, what if, what you gotta design it for a fifteen? It's almost like, why was that statement in there? I guess that was fair, the conundrum, come in, just to take that out, but still consider the change, so you got to continue in the next. If everybody understands what I'm talking about there. I get it. I'm sorry.
So, John, what are we talking about? We have the, this suggested language, is we talking about adopting that?
That's what Vanessa had.
So, right, is this right here?
Yours is not.
Is, is, you're talking this right here?
Yeah, so, yeah, so it's.
Okay. And that is twelve point.
Point three.
Two point seven. All right, does. Any discussion, questions? Pretty good? I mean, I guess my question is, is good, you like the language or?
Yeah.
I'm asking you to make a motion to accept this language to modify, uh, twelve point three point two, parentheses seven.
I'm gonna make a motion to accept the change language for article twelve point three, two, seven.
Well, second.
All right. Motion by Bob and seconded by John.
Kathy, hello, I.
Amy, I.
Friskal I.
Jesse, right?
Alan, I.
Yeah, we can. Andy had to leave the meeting, so.
Ron likes it, huh?
Now, is the attorney made another suggestion too on, for, uh?
It was the one Vanessa had picked up at two point, two point six, two point one, is that? Yes, it was. Chairman would review the stuff to see if it was complete. Vanessa's recommendation would say that. Because it is reviewed by staff, which is your planner, before it comes to you guys. And usually, talks about what's there, what's complete, what's missing, before you guys make your decision on going on with it. It makes sense to use planner, this stuff we originally reviewed, have a planner. I got you.
Now, do we have actually language written down? Is there anywhere that, that, there's a, there's language for this, John?
I thought I saw.
I thought I did too. Do you know where that is?
Because if there's something happening, the planner is cut out, the other way you can give it to staff, solve that, you're saying.
I mean, I'm. Oh, change.
Ah, I see. All right.
I may, make a motion to accept the language, uh, for article two point six point one. Second.
Indian.
Jesse, right?
Two point six point one, we're talking about accepting the new language.
Which end do we?
Donna.
Happy L O I.
Amy, I.
Friskal I.
Jesse, right?
Alan, I. We have enough for you to vote?
Seven.
We have to bring you.
Okay, snap, I. I, I just, I know Norm MacDonald is an alternate, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't screwing up the vote.
What, what do you mean for quorum?
We, seven is our total quorum.
Oh, okay. So I guess I gotta clarify it, I was looking at changes, making clear that the planner was, what Vanessa. Just bring that subarticle out. So it doesn't say anything about who is supposed to redo it afterwards because it's not done or, or you could make a change. That's what she proposed, so I, that's, that's what you just voted on.
Yeah, we voted accepting that language. That's right, that's the language, I think, we accepted that.
You're gonna say so.
We're gonna go with the, the language. Which says, town planner or planning board or chairs designated appointee. So town planner is the primary, chair is the backup or chair is designated backup.
I'm missing it, I'm not, I don't know where it says that anyways.
Site, site review changes, page five.
Right. Yeah, right. Right here, John. Point six point one. Voted to accept that language.
That's what you, that's what's written that was already the stuff you had for your discussion that. That's his comment, was you wanna take that whole sub out. I guess I missed, tried to explain it to you, that's.
Two point six point one just goes.
That was the comment, that was what she brought up because of how it is. So you could just, if you decide to keep the sub out of it, it would be what's listed there, that's when you're happy.
Yeah, we're happy with that because it, it does, this says town plan is the primary, but it gives backup. So I think that having the procedure defined is better.
Leave alone what's written and what you.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
So we didn't have to vote on that.
Yeah.
All right, so is that, is that everything?
Out of all that.
No.
There's.
Now we go to Steve.
We want a public comment being sent in. Comments just to give our information, um, not like you have to answer, um, anybody. It's no different than if someone come on the screen and spoke and gave their opinion. You would still move forward and, you know, make your vote based on how you see fit with it.
Um, just for the record, Andy Napp is back in the meeting and back in the chair.
Then you, I, I don't see anybody on the screen and no one here, but I guess technically you probably should open it for public comment before you do vote in case anybody else wants to go ahead and participate.
I do apologize, I am expecting another call that's gonna come back in, so I know I'm gonna have to step back out. Soon as.
Give it back, take it. No, don't give it.
I know, that's why I was saying, I'd almost rather leave it at, with Ron right now.
Yeah, back to participation, but.
Right, okay. All right, so, we get a public comment, um.
Did you receive the public comment, but you haven't opened the public comment, like you didn't see it.
So let's open, open for public comment. Anybody out there with a star or something? Donna?
Star six, turn your phone.
And unmute. Sign in. Thank you, Donna.
Sign in.
Also, all right, when, when we, uh, for public comment.
Make a motion to close public comment?
Well, we have a couple of comments from Jeff. I think we should, he's talking about that. I mean, he basically doesn't like the, for twelve point three point one, parentheses three. He talks about frontage and he talks about, um, having a street name is confusing. I think we're.
If they do meet the frontage requirement by your backlog regulations, we got two back lots, you have to have at least twenty-five foot for each back lot, so it complies with zoning. And there's a front lot that also ties into it, so you do meet the frontage requirements, so there's hot income, six seventy-four forty-one. E nine one one is the thing that requires a whole meaning change. So that has nothing to do with your subdivision regulations by putting a road name on it.
I think it could, you know, the numbering, the numbering for the town and stuff of the.
That's required by E nine one one.
Yeah, so I think that.
So that's.
Having a road, but twenty-five feet is the minimum, we, we, a road number flips every twenty feet, something like that. Doesn't the road number flip every twenty feet?
Well, it's basically every.
Fifteen? Fifty, so.
Changes an even amount, so if you wanna count both sides of the road, it'd be every twenty-five.
Yeah, so I.
Fifty foot even numbers on one side, fifty foot even odd numbers on the other.
So my point is, if you try to go on the, on the public road, the numbers may not work. So having a, a road and having your, naming it, putting the numbers off of that.
It's required by E nine one one.
Makes sense.
Have no sense to supersede the requirement on there.
Yeah, so I, I, I think that's a suggestion that, um, I personally don't support. Twelve point two point two, parentheses eight, um, he's against driveways longer than a thousand feet, I think it's a valid concern, but on the other hand, if somebody has a big plot of land and they wanna locate their house at the back end of the lot.
If we don't regulate the length of the driveway now, I'm not sure that it's going to be. So there is something in six seventy-four thirty-six, regulating subdivision of land that talks about being able to supply access to buildings, so as long as access to the building is supplied and meet that requirement. If you look on our regulations, all you feed back from the road you can't build on, you got thirty feet from the sides of the rear. You take these long lots that are really deep, like a fifty acre lot, you say you can't build past a thousand feet, there ain't been any weather in the front and the back. Now you're taking a fifty acre lot and it down to, okay, you got a half acre that you can build on and it could be all really put in behind it. You can tell on the person that can't do that. I'm not sure that it's even legal for you to do that.
Yeah, I think the thousand feet is expensive, but if, if the resident wants to do it for whatever reason, I think, to say we can't, he can't is appropriate.
Yeah, if you wanna build, like.
If you wanna build a plot, you can build with the, the plot.
What I think of is someone who owns, buys the side of a hill or a mountain or whatever and they wanna put a building up to the top to have a house with a spectacular view.
Although they got a pond in the back.
Choice.
Although they want that view, yeah. I think that, I think a thousand is a long driveway, but I think that derivative is, is not reasonable.
I think the regulation that you. For a thousand feet, but after, all this stuff, so by the way that goes. And you got how many turnouts and stuff on. That was existing before, you're not actually backing off on it. By your proposed changes.
Um, his next comment is on twelve point three point two, parentheses four. I mean, ten percent has been, we, we, we've always had ten percent, right?
Yeah, yeah, we didn't used to have any, we actually have, I got a note from the past town attorney, that subdivision lots that were created before we put ten percent in. I can't enforce a ten percent rate on them on their existing driveways because that's an upgrade that was required at some point. Can't go back afterwards and change it on them because that subdivision vested, once it gets approved for all the other stuff, so that's one of the interesting things. With that said, the twelve, the ten percent works on most driveways, and the way I read that regulation, there's no portion of it that can exceed ten percent. I think the way this question's written, if you do a ten percent average, is what he's talking about, but the way I read that regulation, when you read it, there's no portion of that driveway for an excess, so it's not an average, uh, uh, regulations aren't written as an average.
Yeah. I agree. Anyone have any concerns?
That can be. On a driveway, it's not really steep, sometimes on a road it becomes more of an issue, but you take the hill on the road out here, um, coming up, we understand hill right here.
Yeah.
Because of that subdivision going in and I was involved in the whole thing, that portion of that town road is actually a thirteen percent rate, so. Hill, that's like town road.
Okay. All right, I think that's his.
One time, we actually had ten percent on our road. And I was. What's happening, roads get extended longer, we can't, that land, uh, creating roads because it's trying to take the road. You're losing a nuzzle, just like anything else in life.
All right, so, close to have a comment? Yes?
Who's going to lead that? So, uh, if anybody participating, or if you'd like to participate in the public event, or if you're opting to decide. Site plan, registration, and. Not a possibility.
Airing none, will we close public comment?
I'll make the motion to close public comment. You need a motion?
Still need to do something.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
All right, what is?
Well, because of how you determined to stay with the 3.2. Keep it alone with how you have it written, actually can approve all of them except for 12.3.2.7, with that minor change you voted on tonight. At the next meeting, voted on and has changed.
Well, so we, what's the one we didn't do, John, I'm sorry?
12.3.2, parentheses seven, that's the one that the attorney made the, well, they voted to approve that as a change, but they have to hold a second. So they can make a final approval on all of them except for that, that one there, you can do as that. Now, the other option you have, you could wait till the next meeting and then prove it on.
I think, I think to me is, makes more sense to approve them all except for that one, get it done.
That way Ron can't think anymore about them.
Right? Give me more time, give me, give me more time, it's only gonna work.
As it was, steps will change, you gotta have a meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Bob, do me a motion.
I motion, oh.
You're gonna accept all the subdivision.
All the subdivision, with the exception of 12.3.2, parentheses seven, for both subdivision and site review.
I'll second that.
Uh, I'm making that one to Joyce. Seconded by Joyce.
He was looking at me.
Uh, Joyce. John, I'll start with you.
Succi, I. Kepi yellow eye.
Friskal eye.
Tessie, you're right.
Alan, I.
Snap, I.
It's passed.
I remember like during the conversation with this guy, Ron, he volunteered.
Do you? I misremembered. Okay, so we could, we could, correct me if I'm wrong, Connor, we could be all planning board members, or it could be this steering committee, or something else, that's our choice, all right?
All you, you're not planning, your team, uh, seems like last meeting, they were too favorable to have a subcommittee, not bother the entire planning board.
Okay, I mean, I think that to me, that makes sense. That was the last meeting.
I agree.
So, Donna?
Yeah.
We, we're talking about having the master planning committee, and there's two choices there, it's a planning board responsibility, so it could be just planning board responsibility. Vanessa in this, in this letter right here suggested a steering committee, made up of two plant members from planning, one from conservation, one from the select board, two citizen spots, and a town planner as, as representing staff. So that's the other, seems like the preferred option, and we can come up with anything else we want. To me, it seems like Vanessa's suggestion was a pretty good one.
It's a good mix.
Yeah, I think so too. Um, who, who wants to vote on that?
Nope. Consensus, it'll be reported in minutes as consensus, but not even two member.
Well, that's, as I say, so who are the two members willing to volunteer to be part of the steering committee?
And they're planning on having these meetings during the day, so everybody's aware, I know people that'll be tired, have more time during the day, people that work, and to have less time, if they get put on the committee and they're not able to make the meeting, it doesn't really serve a purpose.
Andy's volunteering.
I'll volunteer too.
John's volunteering.
Thank you for your dedication and commitment to.
Step it up.
But they say when I get drafted.
So Joyce, seeing that you got a lot of activity stuff going on, would you like to be in the selectment of that? And the selectmen are gonna decide.
So what we will do, we will contact the conservation. They've been excited about participating, so I expect that will be a quick, yes, from them, we'll talk about it this Monday. Everybody else is not the vote, because we define, I think it would be best for the productivity of the process, upon true citizen volunteer, on other ones uninvolved. So I think it's easy to live in the bubble of all citizen volunteering, staff, and everyone, you're always getting the same thing. So finally told, this is a great temporary assignment, especially a few months, three, four, day, um, season, quarter, half, meeting, first water, the tax bill insert, so everybody's gonna be mailed their favorite letter from the town. So we can mail out a note there Friday, that means, insert in there, we started a couple of years ago, and we're updating the way that we, the proper in town, get some. There's a plug in there about the master plan. Outside of the specific committee, there are going to be steering meetings that the citizens are going to be invited to participate in, and give feedback, not as part of the committee, but as part of the process. So either for that reason or as part of the committee, the more people know about this, the more effective the process will be. So if you know anybody interested in the committee, just talk to your neighbors, try to get somebody volunteer. And that will be a decision of the planning board, so hopefully we'll have more than two people put in for it, and it will be a decision of the planning board to decide who they are, and I expect that would happen. Either at the first meeting, or at that kickoff meeting. I guess the, if the planning board's expectation that you allow the selector of conservation. Up there to them, don't have to get.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Might be an alternate member of conservation.
I have a question though, Connor, if we get more than one, we have to choose between more than one citizen, or the two citizens to, to, how do we choose? We'd want them to give a little spiel, or I mean? What's the criteria for?
Yeah, if you want, you can have them fill out the application for appointment, the selector has developed a, did you all go?
I was gonna say, I would have exactly that, I would have them fill out an application for appointment, they would come before us, we would review each candidate, they could be here to speak on their behalf, and we. A nomination based on.
And you could also, you could share, like, you know, at a time, on a public.
All right, sounds good. Are you up to a joint?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion, we join?
Second.